Meeting workshop is called to order. For public comments, we've got one, but it'll wait until we see what we do with one of the agenda items. And we're going to start with number five, the water treatment plant annual update. We've already got her in place. She's been here about three times already.
Third time's a charm.
Let's get this over with.
Yes, and I voted.
Oh, good for you.
We're going to talk about the Guthrie Water Treatment Plant, and as most of you all know, some may not, that the new plant was completed in 2011, and it's a state-of-the-art water treatment plant. We have four employees that work in that plant or work out of the plant. Lee Pierce is our superintendent. He is over two water operators and a, what's the other one? Collections operator. My notes here. And these employees are responsible for making sure that our water meets EPA, ODEQ, and Oklahoma State Health Department standards. The water treatment plant employees are responsible for the production of safe, pleasant tasting, and abundant supply of domestic and commercial needs for our water as well as for our fire protection. The superintendent holds four licenses, they're all C licenses, for water operator, wastewater operator, water lab, and wastewater lab. He has 12 years at, with the water treatment plant and 20 years with the city. So he's been here a while and understands how we operate. These four employees are on call 24 hours a day. The water, the three plant operators rotate weekends and holidays, so they're manned that plant for seven days a week. And the collections operator, he's on call just as needed 24 hours a day. The duties and responsibilities of these employees entail monthly operating reports for DEQ, for the Oklahoma State Health Department of Fluoride Monitoring Report, Tier Two Hazardous Chemical Inventory Report for ODEQ, Consumer Confidence Reports for ODEQ, and Water Usage Reports for OWRB, Oklahoma Water Resources Board. They perform and analyze 52 lab tests per day, ensure that the new requirements and mandates from these regulatory agencies are in place. They evaluate the treatment process daily to ensure that quality, ensure the quality and control, they maintain the chemical and backup equipment inventory, they perform general maintenance and repair on plant equipment, which includes pumps, motors, and gearboxes, and they make operational changes based on the laboratory analysis. The collection operator conducts the dead-end line flushing. We have 120 dead-end lines that have to be flushed on a regular basis. That helps keep the water moving in those lines, and it affects the taste and the color of the water. He collects samples for the Langston University System. They conduct preventive maintenance on program and all equipment valves at the treatment plant, the pump stations, and the towers. And they backwash as many as four filters each day based on laboratory analysis. We'll talk about the budget now. The water treatment plant has total budget of $625,000, $625,003. Personnel services take up about $209,556. And material and supplies take up $350,737. Of that, of that figure, $335,637 goes for chemicals. That's quite a lot. And the other services and charges that are included in that lump sum there is the calibrations, computer maintenance fees, equipment licenses, certifications, and other maintenance charges that might come up, and that totals like $64,700. The 2015 budget in comparison to the 2014 fiscal year budget only increased by 3% this year. We were quite proud of that. The increases address the annual merit raises for the employees and the chemicals and supplies The debt service for the water treatment plant totals $1.3 million annually. The Langston Water Line and the automatic meter-reading system has an annual payment of $296,000. And we have challenges to boot. We've got elevated water towers that, and stand pipes that are an increasing concern. The maintenance of these structures have been avoided because of the high cost of the rehabilitation, and at some point in time, we're going to have to address this. Any questions?
We good to go?
I'm good to go. Good job.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you a lot.
All right, next was, we're going to go back to number three, discussion regarding an entrepreneurial zoning designation.
Thank you guys very much. What we're talking about tonight stems from one of your council goals for 2015, that goal being create and enhance the value of the local economy through progressive business development initiatives. What we're talking about is introducing the first zoning criteria targeted directly at entrepreneurs and small businesses. What this would basically mean would be any, any land that is designated as entrepreneurial or CE-1, they would have to meet a certain criteria and prove that they are a small business or entrepreneurial initiative in order to locate on that land. And to kind of give you some background, what we're, what we're seeing in economic development, and I think it's pretty obvious, the smoke stacks aren't, aren't really popping up anymore. Those, those manufacturing jobs are a little bit different. Those manufacturing jobs are a little bit more tech-based, and there's not quite as many of those traditional jobs as what you've seen. So the, the tech industry, it stems through everything. There's, there's ag tech, there's biotech, there's, you know, the, the people who create the apps that are on your cell phones. And so that, that tech industry is really, really boosting off, and that's kind of replacing manufacturing a little bit, but the, the amount of jobs aren't there. What we've also seen is entrepreneurs succeed in all climates. Down, in down climates, people are desperate for job creation, this kind of thing, so they're taking risks. In uptick climates, you see people feeling comfortable enough to go out and launch their own businesses as well. So going after entrepreneurs, it, it does cast a wide blanket, but targeting them specifically in a, in a designated area, it's a, it's a cultural incentive that they, that they feel like they can bounce ideas off of their neighbors and everything like that. We expect a lot of media attention. We've, we've gotten some help from our friends with Department of Commerce and Greater Oklahoma City Partnership in developing this. They're, they've also kind of got us in the right direction. If we, if we do present this as a, as a final ordinance and the council approves it, they've, they've kind of given us the pathway to talk to several different media outlets, Forbes, entrepreneur.com, Business Week, to get Guthrie's name and brand out there as an entrepreneurial destination. Oklahoma is known as a great location and a great destination for startups already. Oklahoma City was ranked the top market to launch a business. Oklahoma itself is the number-one state for low-cost business startup as well. So that's kind of what we're looking to do, is designate this zoning criteria dedicated towards entrepreneurs and small businesses. Again, it's, it's led by council's goal to enhance the value of the local economy through those progressive business development initiatives. So I'm going to open it up to any questions. I'll tell you right now, kind of what we're looking to do next step moving forward is come back to you to establish this ordinance in a few, in the coming weeks.
Two couple of questions. Is this, when an entrepreneur, if somebody comes in, they can pick a spot and say, "We want to rezon this," or are you still looking at the 80 acres?
The 80 acres would be a great idea for this. I think that's, you know, it's kind of what I think a lot of the community feels is kind of a primary job destination in Guthrie as well.
So if you zone that CE1 or whatever this is, will that prevent anybody else from going out there?
It wouldn't necessarily prevent, prevent anyone from coming out there. We can tell them kind of what we're, what we're looking to do with it, and if, if it's not something that they really fall into, we can talk about kind of strengths and weaknesses of changing this again. One thing that the 80 acres presents is we, I think most of you are familiar with the Bar S deal that fell through years ago. A lot of that, well, 99.9% of that was due to the, the neighbors around there feeling very threatened about odor. These are very non-threatening jobs. The entrepreneurs, like I said, they're not the smokestack generators. They're, they're non-threatening to the, to the neighborhood.
And maybe Randall, you can discuss the legal side of that. So let's say, because I asked the same question the mayor did, is what if someone comes in that is not, Dell Manufacturing knocks on our door and says, "We want to, we're going to put 180 high-paying jobs right there at that corner." What would we do then? Let's say hypothetically, if, if the 80 acres was a CE1, the city owns the acreage, what, what would happen then?
You'd rezon it, and, and you don't have to rezon the whole 80 acres CE1, you can zone a part of it.
So we could do the same thing with the CE1, just make one end of it until we need it later on?
You can.
Instead of doing the whole 80 at one time, just in case, or?
Do that, or if a Dell came or something like that, you'd go back in and rezon it to the use they want.
Well, another thing that we're looking at too, in order to prevent something like that from happening, where we would have to go back and, you know, flip-flop, is if they show kind of a dedication towards entrepreneurial development. If they give their staff some time during the week for creative initiatives, those kinds of things, you know, we, we think that that would be still in support of entrepreneurs as well.
Is this more or less to just establish this designation rather than to designate?
Right. Correct. In order to designate, for instance, the 80 acres as a CE-1, we would have to go through a public hearing from the planning commission.
Okay.
I think we have to give about 30 days' notice of that public hearing as well.
But we have to have it established before we can even go down that road.
This is just establishing a new type of zoning that we don't actually have.
I think it's correct.
Now, is that a good type of zoning to have? Is that something that is, people are looking for now?
The, the culture itself, we, we heard from IEDC's kind of guru for International Economic Development Council, sorry, their guru of entrepreneurship, she said that the culture is one of the biggest incentives that a community can provide. And so when we're talking about being the only community in America and even the world that has the, the strength to say, "Your neighbors are like-minded individuals," you know, you can, you can put them in a coworking space, you can put them in a small business incubator, but when you actually designate a zone, a piece of land zoned towards entrepreneurs, it's a, it's a great incentive for them. Gives them a little bit more freedom as well.
Anybody else? Any questions?
I dig the idea. Is there, have we looked at any other potential areas that we would look in the future? I mean, I know this is very preliminary, but other areas in the community that we've kind of pseudo-identified that?
The armory has kind of taken a little bit of a tension towards this as well.
Yeah. I know Google will fit right in the armory.
Yeah, Google will fit right in the armory. We can build up.
Yeah.
If a landlord sees that it's successful, we would obviously take a look at their case for rezoning their, their area.
Okay. No, I'm just curious if we had thought about it in there. I mean, obviously you have. I love the idea.
I'm going to scan an article and send it to you on Friday, but, you know, the ICMA, Public Management International Magazine this month really, really has a great article about manufacturing and how in the 2000s, you know, we lost in the United States, one-third of all manufacturing jobs to overseas competition. The peak of manufacturing was 1979. We watched a steady decline until now. What cities are now competing for is innovation. They're not competing for smoke stacks. They're competing for, instead of smokestack chasing, we call it innovation chasing.
Well, since my understanding that this is exactly how the Research Triangle started in North Carolina as well.
And this is based off the North Carolina research.
Yeah.
And so it's, and it is. I mean, we go to economic development conferences, it's, it's about creating good schools, good physical environments, good sense of community. We're competitive on wages in Oklahoma, and, you know, to be real frank, we're competing with other cities right now in Oklahoma for, for these kind of jobs. And I think it's a great way to go out and, go out and be able to say, "This is our council's direction, which is very innovative and very progressive."
Does that extend to the airport?
Yeah. Or are we so long, are we crowded out there?
I, it's an excellent question.
It could. If we had Asbills at the airport right now, we would be able to respond to probably about six, six RFPs.
We have hangars built.
Yeah, I know. That's just what I'm saying, an innovative design, I mean, an innovative spin-off is a great idea for, for aviation.
One of the businesses that we had been courting for quite a while ended up in Frisco, Texas, but they really, really loved the idea of being, it's the, it's the bait, bait shop right next to the airport on the, on the south side. They are on the north side. They really love the, I think they had 60-plus acres right next to the airport as well. So the airport is obviously a destination that we would want to take a look at.
Absolutely.
That bait shop one ends up for sale.
We understand.
Again, my, my, my goal is to get kind of a formal proposal to you guys in the next coming, in the upcoming weeks, and, and get this on the council agenda.
So if you have questions about the draft, keep the draft, share it to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move to item number four, discussion regarding territorial squares lease agreement.
This is kind of John's idea.
Number two.
And number two.
So last council meeting we had on the agenda, the renewal of the lease with the territorial squares, and it was tabled with the idea that we would explore amending the, the lease with the territorial squares on the Girl Scout building to have, get out of exclusive use and be non-exclusive use, meaning that we could use that building for other things. And so what, what we did is talked, did a little bit of talk with the territorial squares with Phyllis, and she'll have an opportunity to talk also, Phyllis Johnson, the president of squares, to see if they'd be receptive to that, and they were. And so based on that, I just put together a real quick little bullet point, if you will, that hopefully everybody has in their packets of, of what a recommendation might be to be worked out in terms of amending that agreement. And what we would like to include is that it be inclusive, allowing, as Councilman Wood had expressed earlier, about having the ability for, for a party or an individual to have a bridal shower or a wedding party or that type of thing there to, to utilize that building. So what we're suggesting is, is that the city would schedule and collect fees, and we follow the model that we use currently for Highland Hall, and essentially people will, can make a reservation by calling the city or even online, I believe, and, and then they have to come and put down a cleaning deposit and then their rental fee, and then ultimately, I think a day or two before their event, they come and they get the key and away we go. And so that would be what we would suggest, and then, you know, with the territorial squares agreement, that we would pursue that. So the city would be doing the scheduling, the city would be collecting the money, and the idea also that I guess I didn't have on here would be that they would still have the exclusive use of, if I understand correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, Phyllis, I think you guys meet on the first Saturday?
Second.
Second Saturday?
Fourth Saturday.
Fourth Saturday, okay.
Yes.
So they would have exclusive use for that?
For those.
For their, for their usage, so.
Roof is still leaking.
I was going to say, maintenance, how are we going to work that out? This is?
Well, the, it would fall under the same process we would use then for Highland Hall. I mean, the structure itself is our structure, the city's structure. Typically, if someone rents Highland Hall, that's part of having the deposit down, so if they ruin something, like, you know, hopefully the deposit will cover it. Recognizing that, that building, if you will, or, or that structure right now, today, doesn't have, from the city's perspective, it's empty, meaning we don't have tables and chairs and anything. It's a square dance hall. So it's pretty empty, so. But if something were to get ruined, or, you know, we would, or if it's not cleaned up, you know, from a, from a party, and we'd follow the same rules and regulations that we have for Highland Hall in terms of, you know, the alcoholic beverages and tobacco and all that, all those, those same regulations and rules.
And you said you talked to them and they're?
I initially talked with Phyllis about the openness of them going from an exclusive agreement to inclusive agreement. They said that they would be open to that. And so with that nod, then I put together what you have today. I haven't had, I do know they're having a meeting November 8th, I think, next Saturday, and so.
They need something to go to them.
She, she needs something to go to, probably to her group with to say yea, nay, or whatever, so.
Well, I think, again, the whole deal is, we, I think we tried to push them toward the direction of Highland Hall anyway, so we'd have this one thing, the city needs to get out of the rental business. That building's old, needs a roof here before too long, depending on the weather and what it does to it.
It does.
So I think if they're willing to do this, that'll let them stay there for a little bit more, but that way we can also use it, if Highland Hall's booked and somebody else wants to do something, we can use that, that building. And they would just have to secure their equipment probably better than they do now. Something, whatever, but I think we ought to work with this. Anybody got any other questions or concerns?
I just asked, we don't have any bridal showers, you know. I don't want to be.
Honestly, it probably won't be a high demand location because there's no tables or chairs, and we did not include it in the budget to buy tables or chairs, so I can't imagine, hey, I've been wrong before, but I can't imagine we're going to have a line out the door asking to rent it.
But not unlike the pavilion at Mineral Wells Park that folks rent, we.
Yeah, but there might be some smaller ones surrounding it, we may be able to utilize it for something.
Just, yeah, make something in there.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Are there any other civic clubs that would participate in it?
There may be. I mean, you know, like, lions or, you know, if, if, yeah, civic clubs need a place to meet.
See, they all pay usually to go somewhere, the, the deal is getting a meal to them, but a lot of them cater it, and they bring the meal to wherever they're meeting, so. Quanis does gauges, so they have a meal prepared there, but, and Rotary has, Granny had one over here.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just talking about any other smaller, like, you know, Girl Scouts.
I think Girl Scouts, that's the one we're about to do.
Garden clubs, they do things all over, yeah.
Just something that if we had to, if we had to put it out in our flyer, that if you wanted to use.
Use how the ideal use. A dance hall?
You could have a dance.
Absolutely.
Any kind of dance, doesn't that be?
Yeah, yeah. Like I've said before, when we've had these discussions, we don't want to do-si-do around the issue.
We're not do-si-doing, Trey. We're not do-si-doing.
We want to prone it right into the.
You've been waiting.
He's been waiting.
But I saw it on the internet.
Yeah, you get sad.
It's been sitting.
Deal with that for four years.
Do you want to talk to us, anything you need to say, or?
I apologize.
If you do, you need to go up there, but if you're happy with this, we'll take that too.
Oh, well, like Jim said, you know, I definitely need to take this back to, to our group. One of the concerns that, that we had talked about was it being, not being American Disabled compliant.
ADA.
And that was an issue that, that we were concerned about if somebody got hurt. We have insurance on our group, but we were concerned about what would happen if somebody else got hurt. Sorry.
Go ahead, Jim.
I addressed, since you and I talked, I guess, Phyllis, I hadn't gotten back to you on that specifically, but I did talk to Ramblin', I also talked to Jim Hanke, our building inspector, and essentially with that, we're not looking at new construction, it's old construction, and so that is not a current concern for, for us or the city of renting it, so we're okay with that.
Okay. Okay. And I have thought. And we rented Highland Hall for our last big dance, and we want to do it again, just to put a little bug in, in your ear for next January. And there was things that were locked up. Are we going to have the ability to lock our doors? We've got some, like, decorations and stuff in closets. Are we going to be, have that ability to do that?
I don't see any reason why not. I mean, no diff, again, on the Highland Hall model, it's used Monday through Friday with the home delivery meals and the meals that are done there, and, and on the weekends we rent it, they, they lock, they, they bar the doors so that nobody can get into their equipment or their office supplies, and so, yeah, I think all that would probably need to be done, we can talk later, is just work out a, you guys just need to get a lock and a key.
Okay.
Sure.
We, we do have, and we do understand that we have a contract through 2017, and this is just an amendment, I gather, to that, or is this going to totally change the lease and?
I guess my suggestion to the council would be to have Randall, our attorney, draft a new agreement or addendum to the current agreement, and then it would still continue.
Amendment to your current.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
You're limiting me, aren't you? We have concerns about the additional cost of utilities. The utilities are paid by territorial squares, and anybody that uses the facility will be using utilities that we will be responsible for. I'd like to know how that would be handled.
It's a great question.
Yeah.
Now, do we need to break it down per use? I mean, a fee schedule for?
That's probably what we'd have to do is pro-rate it based on use, and if there's no use, it'll be just like it is now, and if there's use, we'll have to pro-rate it for the days that it's used.
Part of this will just have to be some learning as we go through it to see, you know, looking at time and all that.
Oh, sure. Yeah. And, and we, we definitely want to work. We're, we're not trying to, to, yes, we love our little club, but, and we want, but we want to work with you guys. I mean, it's not like we're, we're trying to be hard-nosed about anything.
Well, and I think, again, we hadn't talked and gotten a great, you know, I, but I know, you folks do have a caretaker out there that does take care of the property per se, and so I'm sure the same could be, you know, as we sit and talk, you know, I mean, keeping the lights out, you know, we've got a caretaker that can maybe do a few things to help, to help the whole agreement as well, to not burden anybody with additional costs yet.
Okay. I think that's it, and I will, after Saturday's meeting, then I will get back, I guess, with Jim, and then we'll, we'll take it from there.
Okay. Thank you, Phyllis.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go to agenda number six, discussion regarding agenda items. Anybody have anything there that we can talk about here and that we don't have to wait on? We're going to go to agenda number six, discussion regarding agenda items. Anybody have anything there that we can talk about here that we don't have to wait on?
Randy, you going to get on me, start talking about who we should appoint to these things, or?
Yeah, let's do that downstairs. Yeah, we need to probably give her that. Number seven, request for future items of discussion. Anything that?
I'm going to get in trouble for that.
I have one thing. I know for years and years, we've kind of bantered back and forth about possible locations, site locations for dog parks, things of that nature. Have we made any movement, or have we looked at?
Yes, we have looked at that, and you know what? It's going to come up on a finance committee agenda more than likely soon, like, in the next one. So let's start there and then see what that finance committee wants to do with it.
All right. I just, I know we talked about it.
We have, and we've gone into some, not engineering drawings or anything, but we've located sites for both disc-off, dog park, and now there's conversations about the elbow being used. And so I use that loosely. I think everybody knows what that means, but the location that was formerly known as the?
My question is, how do we get over to the elbow? How do we get there?
Hold on, I get to use the square dance term, we get to split them.
And I'll go through the finance committee. There's a, there's a bridge program that's funded through a state department, and so it would be looking for grants to get a bridge across.
A walking and bridge?
A walking bridge.
I was going to say, one that maybe flows with the river.
That needs to do that.
Yes.
Yes, let's talk about that.
All right. No, that's all, thank you. Nothing else?